Wait, the neighbor notifications, what is necessary like um I know what by the code what is but so in the file do we need just one copy?
Yeah, well.
A list of everywhere that they've.
Yeah, and that actually should probably be up here is the is kind of it's kind of informally referred to as the blast zone. Like who you're asking because it's not set in our code.
Oh, okay.
Some codes, it's very clear, it's all adjoining properties.
Right.
But we kind of do it on a case by case.
Okay. So knowing what that is.
And then what's that's yeah, and then that they notice those people, so you at least have the the receipt that they sent it. Um and hopefully the card that it got returned even um but as long as they have the receipt that they sent it. And then the rest of it's all like the closeout stuff, which is the art, you know, the the village board's decisions on the parking waivers. Final attorney bill in return of escrow stamped and signed plan set and signed and recorded resolutions. So like this. This is the. So it's stamped, but it doesn't have a resolution number, which is not good. So the because the clerk should.
Are you now, are you pushing play?
What's that? Oh, call order the. The May twenty fourth meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board. Uh chairs remarks, we've got nothing, we've got minutes, you guys reviewed the minutes?
Online.
Yes.
Yep.
So we had a we had a set that um we hadn't seen the February eighth ones, so those I sent.
Gosh, I'm not sure I remember. Was I even on the board then? Oh, yes, I haven't talked about me being February eight, was that like my first meeting or something?
I don't know. We'll read that in the minutes. Any edits or?
Uh none with the five ten meeting. You know what, I couldn't review these two two eight, these are very eight minutes. Seems like a long time ago now. Oh, it does. I do remember this meeting now, I do. Oh, yes. I don't think there's anything missing, but I mean, it all it all rings true.
Motion for five ten and two eight as edited, those are I cleaned them up just a little bit actually before I sent them to you guys.
Okay. As clean, yes, motion to accept?
Yeah, second, all favor.
Aye.
Okay, so it's the February eighth and the May tenth.
And missed, who who motioned and who seconded?
Yeah, Stephanie motioned and and Lara seconded.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, so did anybody get a chance to to look at this stuff or?
This?
Yeah.
This is good.
Oh, you looked it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think so we have no, because we've got like all this, so I spoke to the village clerk. Who wasn't really aware that I don't know if he wasn't aware, but it's seemed like it's kind of come to light that there's been no filing for a very, very long time.
How how long is very, very long?
Maybe a year. So we'll have to kind of play catch up, Anne's gonna Anne's gonna help now to fill in that gap.
Okay.
Because it used to be a lot with Linda and then Mary would fill in if Linda missed anything, but Mary was always kind of overlooking it. Just to make sure, because like the clerk, one of the official roles the clerk has is obviously the the records, but. They also um timestamp things in and officially record them on behalf of the village. What's that?
Has that been happening?
We yeah, well, that's the thing is that then so like um the resolutions that we do have to be. Date stamped by the clerk, then they have to be given the resolution number, which is whatever the next number is, they'll have to be unique number. And then a copy goes into the file, a copy needs to go to the building department. So for now, we'll have to just kind of play cleanup and kind of go through this stuff. I don't know if we want to do it tonight, we might wait till we have a little bit more people, because we got a lot of stuff, I mean. And a lot of it's maybe what I'll do too is I didn't get it my the file copy stamp, they didn't have one here, so I ordered one. Because we could just have a set marked file copy and then throw out the rest, because we we don't need to overfile this stuff, there's a lot of. And I don't really even think. I'm not sure we even need to keep a copy of all progress sets, because sometimes they go on so long. But I don't know, actually, I'll talk I'll talk to John about that, because. You know, like obviously the one twenty six main is a good example, it came in with, you know, concrete front to back, the board had. Is that we wrote the memo to them, I pointed out the comp plan to them, and then it changed, so I don't know if we should have that stuff, it's in the minutes.
I think so.
I actually think we should.
We should keep.
We should keep that, the so that we have note, we have documentation of the iterations of it.
So all versions?
Well, how many, what's the maximum number of versions are that there are usually, I mean, probably one.
What's common or what's?
Yeah, just.
On a small project, yeah, you're gonna get a couple, but on, you know, on larger projects, it could be, you know. And and projects that have consultants on it, like when Karen is working a project, there's just, it's just a churn.
Paperwork, yeah.
Um and but and sometimes it's one page out of a whole set. So like when there was an issue, the lighting plan, there was no note on the site plan that showed the lighting would be. Only turned on for the tenants use and then at and the rest of it would only be it would only be fully lit during business hours. So I said, just replace that page, don't send, you know, eight, you know, more sets.
So is there, is that, I mean, I can understand why we wouldn't want another full set.
Not a full set, but just whenever there was an update.
It seems like that update should be.
Just to paper trail.
Identified as like it it seems like it would make sense to me that if we would have version one. If the next time, you know, if the version two was just replacing a page, then we just have the plate the page and with a note to file that.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably it's probably best to keep the versions, the question is really if it can be done. You know, I mean, because if it if it clogs up the works and then we then we risk not having the ones we really need.
Right, right.
That's not a great solution to say, you know, to kind of manage to the marginal performance.
Well, what what's the what is the status of the have we have we found out what the status of the digitization?
It's it is ongoing, but it's but I don't really have a whole lot of clarity. It just we're we're supposed to put the referral number on it, which is usually which is the calendar date.
Oh.
Well, that's what he when he gives us a referral, has a referral number.
Okay.
Just typically just the day he issues the referral.
Okay.
Um and I'm sure if he does more in a day, if there if there's a series, if there's an A or something.
And so is each application anchored by one, like the one referral date and that's.
That's the that is the.
Becomes the primary record.
That's the primary index, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's what they use, so there is an imaging project that's ongoing, I'm not sure, it didn't sound clear, I mean, I don't well, I don't have any access to it.
I'm sorry, just going back to the the live the hierarchy of these files and this record number. Is it reasonable to think that more than one referral might occur on the same day?
Well, that's what I said, he he made he probably has a sequencing number, like he penned an A or something.
Got it.
I would think so, I mean, I would think that they're doing more than one in a day, I don't know, I don't really have that much.
Should we, that is is this something that the clerk can speak to us about? Could we, he's in the, do we want to invite him to come in and talk to us about this?
I don't know if we want to interrupt that, he's here to like try to clean up.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I hate to like kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
Make him regret being here. Doing work.
Alright.
Um and I don't think it's all that, I think we can, let me just see if I can.
Okay.
Seven Mary.
Would it make sense like next meeting to just run through one of the projects with the checklist? With everyone here, so everyone's on the same page or a a larger portion of us here, is that what you were suggesting, wait until next time?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, and we're just three of us.
We could do like one or two and then that way then maybe then a couple of us could like maybe Sue and I could come in. On another day and it's sort of like because it's catch up for a whole year, it's.
It's not, it's not as much as you would think though, because we don't have, because we don't have, like that's a year, so I mean, well, hopefully it is.
But just in terms of its.
Well, no, it it should be, yeah, actually, yeah.
Not so bad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like nine Morris didn't even really have a file, I mean, there's some of this stuff doesn't even really.
Right, well, that wasn't a formal application.
You know, Rose, we still don't have the, we got Judith, we don't have her uh site plan.
Twenty nine Morris, that was the one that got.
That was both the.
They withdrew, yeah.
They withdrew.
Yeah, they withdrew, yeah, so looks like he's doing, he has different numbering sequence, reference number is. Where's the date on this though? It's two thousand eighteen dash oh two dash oh eleven, so maybe he's just numbering them for the month. He's doing a running number, yeah, the date of referrals is February twenty third, so I suspect that he's doing, it's the eleventh referral in February. That's what he's doing, um and so that's the unique identifier, so that's the primary index that they're keying everything off of. So I might just order a date stamp too.
Okay.
Just so then that way we can just, you know, we can just kind of go through it, because it takes a while, I mean, because I stamp. And sign the site plans and I stamp every page and sign every page so that we can't kind of like, you know, shift pages out. So it might be easier to have a date stamp too.
Yeah.
Um so we don't have to write it out and people have to read people's handwriting. So I think this is, this is a start, so that's on the it's on the the Google Drive. So it basically starts with a building department referral, then it goes to an application, then obviously they send in plan sets. Site plan review or subdivision has an escrow of a thousand dollars, so we should be looking for the escrow. We should be looking for the owner's affidavit, that's a form we added since I've been on the board. To make sure that the owner is actually signing off on a document that's notarized. So we know that the owner is aware of um the fact that one of their tenants is making a change to their building.
Do we want to distinguish on this form, um whether it's a a site plan or a a subdivision or a a site plan? For, you know, I'm just thinking if there are two types of escrow, do we want to distinguish on this?
It's the same escrow, it's a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the same.
So is this, so if there if an owner's affidavit is um needed, then that assumes that the application is put forth by a.
A non-owner, yeah.
A non-owner, so is there a case where an owner puts an application through like in?
Like Rose.
Like Rose did, so would then you don't need an owner's.
Or even Karen Park, she's, you know, an owner can also on the application can check up if you got a representative.
Right.
So it's actually the owner that's making the application and the representative that's basically presenting to the boards and and keep and and making all the file documents.
So should we clarify like only if owner's affidavit and just in parentheses or something if.
Or we would mark it as N A.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, some of this stuff will be like N A, I mean, like it's stuff that's stuff that's like, stuff that's considered to be exempt from seeker. Obviously, it would just be the, you know, long or short form. Stuff where there's no need to present a parking table. You know, we just we just, you know, we could just put an N A there, that's what I think the box is.
Where would you not need to present a park, don't you always have to present a parking table?
Judith, for example.
Oh, because it's a private, right, okay, owner, okay, so it's I I'm thinking, because it's been a lot of business.
Residential, yeah. Yeah, very little residential has to come to the planning board. But like nine Morris is interesting, even though we didn't have jurisdiction. It's a residential house, but there was, you know, it was a business use. So basically, we want to just cover the universe and then just decide what we actually need in the file.
Or N A.
Just so at least you're thinking about it as opposed to completely forgetting about it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we'll write down whether or not it's N A.
Are there, is there a way, I guess my question is, is that should we signify things that have to be part of the application versus things that are like potentially N A? Just even just in terms of like bolding, maybe we just put the text in bold for if it's like really required and then that way as we're going through. We know that we really have to have everything in bold, whereas especially for newcomers like me, because I'm I'm not.
Or we can even like indent, you know, we could everything.
Yeah, something like that.
Fully left margin that's required and then indent it stuff that is that could be file specific or application specific.
Yeah. I think I like it being simple and clear, but I just think that like otherwise it might get confusing for especially someone else.
Applications like the like nine Morris would not.
Wouldn't have an application.
These would, yeah.
Wouldn't have an application.
Right.
Oh, they just came into.
No, 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 the the zoning board appeals asked us to give us an opinion.
Oh, okay, so we don't even have that in our records.
No, so it's basically just minutes.
Oh, okay, good, okay, so that's where there is documentation, but it's.
It would just be in the minutes, yeah, and we did talk about writing a letter.
Right.
But before we even wrote the letter, before I'd even written the letter, they'd withdrawn the application, so there's no need to to write the letter.
To the zoning board, right, that was not.
Yeah, yeah, there's no application.
It wasn't us, okay.
And the H R B, I would assume, although I don't think they're doing anything outside.
Right, okay.
Does that happen often where people propose um projects and then withdraw? Because it's happened, then there was the tapas bar.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not terribly common, typically they're they're far enough along that they're, you know, they're gonna move forward. But it happens, I mean, like the guy that came in to talk about the P C N R building, I don't know what happened with that.
Ellis Bellis. Once upon a time.
Before me, yeah.
Yeah, that was before, yeah, and that was kind of before us even, because it, well, no, it was there, we finished them up in a couple of meetings, but. They had gone on so long that they lost interest, so that was like a unique. I don't know what's what happened with the P C N R building, I don't know, the guy that was gonna buy it.
The oh, where the P C N R used to be?
Yeah.
So then that's just vacant?
Oh, I don't know, I don't think so, I think they're still in there, I don't know.
Oh, wasn't it the artist?
Yeah.
And he never, that application never proceeded? Oh, interesting, yeah.
Was it an, did we get an application?
No, it was just a, he was just a workshop.
Okay.
It was just a workshop.
Yeah, interesting, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so every so, yeah, I mean, it's not unusual that people don't proceed or but in most cases like. Like the the old antique store, like the one that was gonna be like a a very similar to a barber and burial without the barber. Is um that's unusual, because like you'd think they probably are close to a lease or something, unless the business plan changes, I'm not sure. Um, okay, and that's what we got, uh two thirty nine M referrals, those are, that's part of municipal law, which basically. Is that if anything was in five hundred feet of a county road, a park, a facility, I put that in the. In the uh in that file too, just to look at what two thirty nine M is. So two thirty nine M is supposed to go over to the county, because municipal law requires that the county has input. Anything that could, anything that could change traffic, they also want to see parking, you know, so most of our stuff. If it's within five hundred feet of ninety, then it goes, it's supposed to go to county, we don't wait the amount of time or they waive. Or if they, if there's a non-response after thirty days, then it's a it's a default to waive. But we gotta make sure we follow that too, you know, because we do have stuff that, you know, that is that close.
When was the last time we sent a two thirty nine, was it?
Uh certainly for um for River Architects, for, you know, for.
Okay. And did that get, did that get sent over, I'm just thinking about like, oh, okay.
Yeah, John does that stuff.
Oh, okay, that's alright, good.
Yeah, so I mean, since I came here, before I came here, they didn't use the the lawyer that much. I never, I never really thought that was really wise, because then the village kind of takes on the burden of whether or not it's right. And that comes with risk, and so it it always seemed to me that, you know, there are most of us will live in this village our entire lives and will never be in front of the planning board. So for the village to assume any risk or monetary, you know.
Liability or.
For, you know, for what are private applications and in most cases, commercial applications, it's just not, it's just, it's not right. So I think, you know, and I even think we should increase the fees a little bit too, to kind of offset some of it. A lot of these places, like, you know, every time you submit plans, every time you submit, you know, um but. At least to make sure that it isn't, that the burden isn't shifted to the taxpayer. Because like I said, most of us have absolutely no need for the planning board um in our personal lives, so.
When the building department.
So the so then the so then what I started doing was then the the village attorney processes the application and we do it and they do it, he does it pretty cheap, he typically does it. For less than the thousand dollars of escrow, you know, and then that way we don't miss things and then not only it's not that we didn't miss things, it's.
It's attorney, yeah.
And so I think it's much better for the village to ask the applicants to, you know, because I don't, they didn't collect much escrow before, before I was here, they didn't collect much at all really. And there are a lot of wards that don't, like H R B is not, and they really should be, um and I think they're trying to change the structure of the code so they can.
So it does that, just to clarify, the escrow is for every application that is put forth?
So it's in the code, it's in the code, the stuff that we look at, which is gonna be a subdivision or a site plan review. Yeah.
Or change of use.
Yeah, change of view, well, well, no, change of use doesn't have escrow. But they're almost, they're, it's typically gonna require site plan review though.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because we're gonna have to, because we're gonna have to calculate the parking.
Right.
So if it's a commercial, it's it it's it's a site plan, it's a site plan amendment with a change of use.
Right, okay.
And in that case, it would require the escrow.
Yeah, and then something obviously that's not an application or something that's a referral or something, not a referral, but just like an opinion, obviously it wouldn't have an escrow. So it's pretty clear in the code, the other ones are not as clear, the other the other boards aren't as clear, some are, some aren't. And then there's somebody have the parking waiver recommendation, we have a public notice. We should be, I'm I don't see them anymore, Linda or Mary used to, or you know, I don't know who. The paper would send them over, the public notices, I'm not sure what's happening, I don't know if they're going, I don't know where they're going. But when the first couple of years I was on, I would file them in the file, because I, because they. We placed them and then the newspaper would send them to me, I don't know where they're sending them now. So I don't know if they're going, they're probably going to the village clerk. And probably we should have it in there that there's an evidence that it was noticed.
Right.
You know, because.
Because that's where things could.
Yeah, well, that's where people can claim they didn't have constructive notice and they, you know, so. It's better to have it in the file, it's the it's always best to have it in the file, and then the neighbor notifications. And then when we go to close it out, it's all the stuff on the back end, you know, that we that we make, that's the stuff that we really gotta make sure we're in the file too.
Wait, the neighbor notifications, what is necessary like, um I know what by the code what is, but so in the file, do we need just one copy?
Yeah, well, so.
A list of everywhere that they've.
Yeah, and that actually should probably be up here is the is kind of it's kind of informally referred to as the blast zone. Like who you're asking, because it's not set in our code.
Oh, okay.
Some codes, it's very clear, it's all adjoining properties.
Right.
But we kind of do it on a case by case.
Okay. So knowing what that is.
And then what's that's, yeah, and then that they notice those people, so you at least have the the receipt that they sent it. Um and hopefully the card that it got returned even, um but as long as they have the receipt that they sent it. And then the rest of it's all like the closeout stuff, which is the art, you know, the the village board's decisions on the parking waivers. Final attorney bill in return of escrow stamped and signed plan set and signed and recorded resolutions, so like this. It's in the building file, this is the. So it's stamped, but it doesn't have a resolution number, which is not good. So the, because the clerk should be, there should be a log of the resolutions for the.
Do we wanna, I mean, if we're gonna use this for our exercise and going through retrospectively, do we want to add reference to things like that?
To.
The 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 numbers, like things that we want to look for, because we're gonna need a, we need a resolution number for this, but we might find some other things.
That's what this is, the recorded.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
So if um I sign it, right, so I give them this document, I leave this for the village clerk, right? And I've signed it, but then they have to stamp it, this doesn't, I don't know what's going on here.
Is that embossed stamp, is that the stamp of the clerk?
So I, Mary didn't used to do this, I don't know what this is, this it's the Village of Cold Spring seal.
But that's not the stamp that you're speaking of.
It would be better to have a dated stamp, because what matters is what day it was recorded with the village clerk, because that's what a recording is.
It appears not to have that recorded.
I mean, it's great that somebody that has a stamp, you know, a raised stamp. That has access to it embossed, that's great, but it but really doesn't, it doesn't do the one thing it's supposed to do, which is what day was it recorded with the village clerk? Because that's a date stamp, Mary would sign it here. And then we give the resolution number, you know, I don't know if the resolutions are. I think they're per they're per board, they're numbered, they're sequential per board.
So it's different, yeah.
So I'm not sure if that's happening either, so we should, we'll kind of start to kind of clean all this up. And so we'll do like the front end stuff to get it all kind of, you know, into stacks.
Maybe we can like know what's missing.
Yeah.
And then then we can have the sleuthing, finding the missing components.
Yeah.
Exercise after.
And then we can reconstruct, yeah, because this list will help us kind of say, when I asked for this, because. Because the applicant was asking for it, I said, no, I left it with the clerk, it's recorded with the clerk. The clerk then has to leave copies for the building inspector, so the building inspector, building inspector is not supposed to be issuing a permit. Without a signed resolution from the planning board. And a set of signed stamp plans. So.
Isn't possible. Do you think that they have been issuing permits though in?
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know. I'm sure it's possible, I mean, I mean, I don't, like. Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure how they're even. Because now it's different, because I think the clerk is issuing some permits, isn't he, no, just the referral?
Just the referral.
Yeah, so even the referral is a code.
Oh, actually, no, I don't know, I thought he he's referring them to H D R B before they go up to the building inspector?
Yeah.
I thought he was making note to the building inspector. I I I don't know if they're clear on what that role is.
They come from the village clerk.
Okay.
I talked to the village attorney about this, because I said, in my opinion, that's that's actually code enforcement.
Yeah.
Which is not the village clerk.
No.
So um I said, I don't know if we're ever gonna run into an issue with somebody claiming that, you know, that that we're not following municipal law. So I said, it's best to just kind of, and and John may have figured out a way that it's okay, because I know he addressed it.
Oh, okay.
Or well, I don't know if he addressed it, I know they he brought it up with I, because I asked him to bring it up with the village. Just to make sure that somebody doesn't turn around and then say, I was never really properly referred, it's not really, it's not binding, right? So because that it's definitely code enforcement, because you're basically looking at the code and saying, okay. You can't go straight to permit, you gotta go to here.
Right.
And so I don't, I I would think if you can do this, you would issue, you could be issuing the permits and maybe the building inspector is just doing the inspections, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So. Book it up, and we'll pick it up next time then.
Okay.
Um, anybody have anything else?
No. Oh, uh, one thing, sign, did we want to talk about? So I'm interested to know the uh the blast zone, the neighbor blast zone that we were here. And that this is determined case by case, so it's not written into the code that we are obliged to prescribe as her. So similar to case by case and neighbor, you know, the planning board has discretion about that. Should we consider asking people to put up a sign or should we consider having a village sign placed at the property?
I mean, I I brought that up for years.
Yeah, yeah, it's come up before, so.
It would be more of an inter-board meeting probably.
Okay.
The the board should decide. The chairs of the board should all meet, you know, and probably or all the boards, depending on the boards, but. And then just kind of say, I mean, I brought that up, there doesn't really seem to be a whole lot of traction for it, you know, I mean, I. I even like the ones like they use in Vancouver, which are about like this big.
Really, really big.
Well, because you can't miss them, because every, it's amazing when the people say they didn't know, I mean, first of all, nobody's reading newspapers for legal notices to look at this stuff.
They aren't, it's true.
But if they walk by a building and see a big sign of this, and if they, they're very simple, they basically say, this property is under review by. The Historic Review Board, by the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, right? So people know that as they walk by that property, there's a sign up there that says that property is under review, because there's an application, I, you know, they're concerned.
I think having a universal sign like that would be a.
I mean, they're.
Because then the people that are the most affected will be aware early on, because it's gonna be neighbor.
That's what I've always said, that's what I've always said, because I, you know, even when I was on it on the village board, because I said. If you get people talking early enough.
Then you can prevent a lot of.
My assistant at work just had a conversation with her neighbor, and she was just out of her mind about like, you know, she's like, I don't want you doing this, it's gonna block my light. You know, and so I said, you know, and I was kind of making fun of her, I said, but this is really what you want, is you want neighbors talking before an application goes in. Right, so that way then, when you know that somebody is so sensitive about something, you may just decide it's not worth it, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna proceed. As opposed to what can happen, which is that it's just a lawsuit, right, cause they're just, people feel like they're not heard, and that the village isn't, they don't find, you know, they don't find legal notice. You know, there was the guy here, I forget about what, I think it might have been the demolition of one twenty six main, saying I didn't really realize they had already.
Yeah.
It was too late, you know, I said, well, and I asked him, I said, well, if you saw a sign up there, would that have helped? He said, absolutely, so.
Yeah.
Signs make the most sense, the problem with, the, the pushback has always been on the signs, it's all the visual clutter.
Right.
But, you know, but I'm like, well, then that's, you know, I mean.
Would you make it maybe a different rule for residential versus commercial districts maybe? Because visual clutter, that maybe, maybe people don't want those kinds of signs in front of their home. But maybe, you know.
It's the same risk, if not greater, I mean, the, one of the largest ones that we went on was residential, which was the Stone Street Shed.
Oh, yeah.
You know, lawsuit that was appealed and appealed and appealed, and, you know, and so.
When was the Stone Street Shed?
It was just a shed that was built that, on Stone Street, and so then there was an article seventy eight filed.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that.
That just went, and it was, you know, so I mean, and so that would have been a residential property that would have been missed, and so.
Well, what if we have it really nicely designed? There's a lot of.
I think we want it to be orange with black, so it catches people's eye, and.
But nicely designed.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
A sad, a bold sans.
Yeah, I think the pushback, like I said, it was typically the visual clutter, but I'm like, you have to have some downside to, you know.
It's temporary.
Yeah.
Well, you don't want it to be so seamless visually that you miss it. I mean, the point is for it to be.
Yeah, I mean, they're just a big, black and white, you know, basically.
It's better to have visual clutter.
A municipal. Well, that's it, it's, it's a necessary evil, really, I mean, cause what are you gonna do, you're gonna, you know. Clearly, it doesn't work that great, this whole neighbor notification, and there are people that have interest. That are not in the blast, that are not in the blast zone either, right? This person was not notified, cause it was behind. You know, so, um, it's just best to just, you know, say there's a big sign out front. And that way then, when you talk about constructive notice, which is the requirement, right, is when, when could you have known reasonably that this was happening? Right, and then that's where the clock starts ticking as to when you can file, you know, what, when you can make claims that, you know, so.
And that's pretty decisive, to put, you know, if, if it's a, if there is a note, a notice and it's visual and it's.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's really the most, I think it's the most practical method, because I think then that way people, it, it, cause it works, it's just people walk by and they see it.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
I guess maybe the counterargument against it too, from, like if I'm thinking about it from the homeowner's perspective, is that they don't. Want people to, they don't wanna alert, you know, everybody.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe somebody that doesn't really have a vested interest, but that might happen to walk by once and then decide, but. You know, I'm just trying to play devil's advocate as, as you did, with the visual clutter. As to why people might not be for it, but I think definitely like. I mean, you're, you're right that it's, it's, it's becomes an issue in a residential zone, just as it does in a commercial zone, but if. Even if we were to get it in just one zone, as a requirement in a zone that is already more visually diverse, like. Because it's Main Street or, you know, or, then it would help be preventative there, you know. Even if it doesn't apply to everywhere in the village, as, as a first step or something, I don't know. So then the.
I suspect your risk for lawsuits is gonna be neighbors.
Yeah.
More than people, you know, even like one twenty six main. You know, cause if it doesn't affect, you know, what you feel to be your, you know, the enjoyment of your property.
Yeah.
Right, and yet it's a loss of a building, it's probably less likely that you're gonna pursue it, but. Now, this person saying it was, you know, blocking their view shed or their light or whatever, and then, like I said, my assistant was saying, cause. They were gonna do something, she was gonna block quite a bit of her, her view shed and, and darken her backyard. So I think those are the people that are gonna say it's their property value, not the kind of abstract of. You know, of the loss of like, yeah, yeah, I think that's, but I think they're both. They're both important, and I don't know, we're just trying to figure out which one's more important.
Well, should we ask, should we, should we ask them?
I'll ask them again, I mean, I do it every time we have, every time we have the inter-board meetings.
Yeah.
When does that happen? How often are you interviewed?
We, I usually, we just call them, I mean, we should, because I mean, first of all, the, the code update committee is meeting, and so we should probably, I'm sure there's stuff for that. But yeah, I mean, I think that we should just, you know, I mean, bring it up again, because it's, it's an ongoing. Thing that people really don't feel that they know that stuff is happening.
And it would be for a temporary period, so again, the clutter, you know, it's not forever, it's for probably like you could set forth. As the.
Yeah, I'm telling you, the ones that go on the longest really is HRB review, but you could have just a posting period of, you know, thirty to ninety days.
Right, it doesn't have to be for the whole process, as long as like.
Signs won't last as long as they review.
It could be a thirty day to, yes, ninety.
Um, I think that when I was originally thinking about this, I was thinking that it would be, it would be a sign. Related to the public hearing, but are we thinking, or were, are you, are you talking about the process of reviewing an application, like that time period?
What would be anything, it, not everything, not even required, would require a public hearing.
True, that's true, you're right, that's true, I'd forgotten about that.
So you did.
Sniglet.
You could, um, and you kind of wanna, you know, I mean, just even variances could be.
Yeah. No, no, you're right, you're right.
Yeah.
I was just thinking the other, another alternative, if, if, it felt like. The idea of having a posting on each property was too invasive for whatever reasons. Then maybe, is there a central location where it could be posted, like in the village, that would be? You know, it is.
It might just be marginally better than a, than a legal notices, you know, you'd have to attend to it.
Right.
Cause really, it's more gonna be that it.
But eventually it'll catch on.
Here is that it impacts their daily life, right, their, their walk to and from the train, their view, their view from their yard, their. So I mean, if the sign is where ultimately where the, where the change is happening.
No, that's true, I agree with you that having it where the change is like, probably the most effective.
Yeah.
But I think that, you know, having a second sort of back, in the back pocket option of. Well, there's a community board, and then we just make everyone aware over time, that that's where it goes, and in addition to the newspapers, because. You're right, that people probably don't go search, some people don't.
And you have to subscribe to the PC and R.
Right, yeah.
I think they, they, aren't they posting them in the, in the current also? Notices, I think they published their notices in the current as well.
Have seen that, but maybe I'm wrong.
Not anymore, they did for.
I mean, they're not the paper of record, I mean.
No, no, they're not the paper of record, but I think the town and the village have both, for, for a number of years now have.
They post both?
They're printing them in both, because.
I know Linda, I know we weren't.
Really?
I mean, that, when Linda was still here, I mean.
Oh.
Cause Linda would take care of that.
For some reason, I thought we were, I know that the town does it, and I thought that.
I thought the town did, yeah, I think the town did do it.
I thought that the village decided to do that in two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen?
Yeah.
I know.
I'm misremembering.
I do remember, I, I remember when the town decided to do it.
Yeah.
I always see the signs that are on the way to the train station, you know, right on that corner, when you're going down the street.
Next to Tyvek House?
Yeah, exactly, what's going on with Tyvek House?
Well, it's for sale.
Oh, okay.
It is?
Yeah.
It's listed?
It's listed.
Oh, really? As I said, it's been, it's just been sitting for years.
Been sitting, Tyvek.
It, yeah, it's good advertising for Tyvek.
It is.
For house rap. But yeah, I mean, maybe it's a couple, maybe the alternative solution is a couple of central locations or something, that, you know, cause we are, the purview is the village, so.
And we'll bring it up again, I mean, it's, it didn't really get any traction. Um, I know that there are members of the HRB that supported it, but it's probably for the reason that you're talking about too, is then you kind of, um.